...who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
You are watching the broadcast of the El Paso County Commissioners' Court Meetings. Commissioners' Court Meetings are held every Monday at 9:30 a.m. on the third floor of the El Paso County Courthouse located at 500 East San Antonio in downtown El Paso. These meetings are open to the public. The meeting will start momentarily.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.html to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor felony and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners' Court Meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for El Paso County Commissioners or El Paso County, Texas. Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy. In 2015, the county of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast, the number two, coast, r x, dot com. Happy savings.
Did you know the county of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information. Did you know that the county of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
You are watching the broadcast of the El Paso County Commissioners' Court Meetings. Commissioners' Court Meetings are held every Monday at 9:30 a.m. on the third floor of the El Paso County Courthouse located at 500 East San Antonio in downtown El Paso. These meetings are open to the public. The meeting will start momentarily.
February 26, 2018, Commissioners' Court is meeting in regular session. It is now 9:32 a.m. Will you please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British Commons, one nation, under God, the British Justice.
Thank you. The first item is the call for consent. The consent agenda is composed of items 3A through 3Q. It's been requested by the Assistant Contract Administrator that item 3O be postponed for one week, please. Are there any other items that members of the court or the public would like to consider separately, please?
Pull item D, please.
D, 3D for Commissioner Hagerty.
Commissioners, any other items you'd like pulled from the agenda? No? Okay.
Make a motion to accept.
Okay.
Second?
Commissioner Leon and the judge, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Commissioner Perez is absent. Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout? Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to item four, Resolutions. 4A, approve and adopt a resolution designating the week of February 26, 2018 through March 3, 2018 as GECU Saves Week in El Paso County, Texas.
Good morning, everybody. It is my pleasure to read this resolution into the record, and I think we have a few guests here with us today. So I'll go to get started. Whereas personal and household savings is fundamental to El Paso's stability and vitality, and whereas adequate emergency savings, retirement funds, and safe debt-income ratios are critical components of personal financial security, and whereas America Saves is a national campaign to persuade, encourage, and motivate Americans to take financial action in building wealth through saving money and reducing debt, and whereas GECU is a partner in the America Saves campaign and is committed to helping its members and community take immediate financial action to build wealth, no debt, not debt, and now therefore be it resolved by the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners' Court that February 26 of 2018 through March 3 of 2018 shall be known as GECU Saves Week, and call upon all members and our community to increase or start savings efforts, challenge family members and friends to save, or take other positive wealth-building actions during GECU Saves Week, and pledge to sustain that action during the following year. Sign this 26th day of February 2018 by the Honorable Members of the El Paso County Commissioners' Court.
Do I say?
Thank you. Commissioner Perez is absent. Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And we do have a few members of the GECU team here with us today. Barbara McMillan, the Assistant Vice President for Consumer Lending; Jenny Turner, the Assistant Vice President for Loan Services; and Gina Lewis, the Marketing Specialist for Deposit Products and Military Relations. If you'd like to come up, I know you may not want to say a few words, but we'd love to, to, we thank you for being here, and we'd love to hear about what GECU is doing around this week.
Good morning, and thank you for having us here. And we just wanted to say that we do appreciate the recognition and the support for GECU and the community of El Paso during this week. It is really important for us to have our members, to help our members save, and to establish good financial responsibility, so this goes a long way toward that goal. Thank you.
Sure does, and we encourage all of the community to start saving for the future. That's what we need to do as a, you know, city, so, thank you.
And I know that GECU is incredibly involved, to a very large extent, in what happens in El Paso, so we appreciate your engagement and the efforts that you have underway for increasing financial literacy in El Paso. So thank you again. A round of applause, please.
Thank you. Item five, Public Comment.
Ms. Petecek, I don't believe we have anybody here signed up for public comment today, unless there is anyone in the audience that would like to speak. None, okay.
Thank you. No action on item five. Item six, Presentation. Item 6A, receive a presentation from the state lobby firm regarding the county of El Paso's legislative efforts and discuss the process in which the county agenda for the upcoming 86th session of the Texas Legislature shall be drafted.
Commissioners, as you know, during the interim year, we worked toward crafting our state legislative agenda, and working with our lobbyists, who will be up here in just a second, we really wanted to, one, have a kickoff to the process, but also get things started much earlier so that we get an agenda crafted and finalized earlier, which gives the court and the department heads and our elected officials more time to vet, and hopefully get, although we're very successful in our efforts every legislative session, have even more success by starting our process earlier. So with us today are Steve Bresnan and Amy Bresnan, and Claudia Russell, who most of you are familiar with, and I'll let, Steve, go ahead and take over from here.
Thank you, Judge. Commissioners, pleasure to be here today. Ten years ago, when Claudia and I started representing the county at the state level, we were much later in the year and way behind the curve. And this year, we're getting a head start, as we did last year. I think we're even doing better than last year, and we expect lots of activity this year. We very much enjoyed those last 10 years. They've brought a lot of change and a lot of new faces, and a lot of good things for El Paso, so we're, we're very pleased to be here and to be with you. I'd like to announce that Amy Bresnan is in addition to our lobby team. Amy's a lawyer. She has a master's in public administration from Texas State and lots of involvement with the legislature, both on the House and the Senate side, in the past, so we're glad to have her as a part of the lobby team. I want to, if I could, just give you some context, and then talk a little bit about what's going to happen this year that we know about on the, on the legislative front. And then Claudia is going to come up and discuss with you the proposed schedule that, that we're, we're talking about using this time. El Paso, at this time, has an outstanding legislative delegation. They have really worked themselves into excellent committee appointments, and their work is lots of nuts-and-bolts type stuff that's helpful to the county and helpful to the schools and the city. And it's, it's been interesting to watch the delegation evolve over time. They're all strong personalities, but I think they're getting along very well at this time, and they're all contributing in a way that I like to characterize them as workhorses. And I think you're going to see that going forward the remainder of the year. We maintain excellent relationships with the delegation. We've got excellent communication with them, and we're hoping to continue to facilitate that communication from the delegation back to the court. There's a lot of change that's coming ahead. Lots going to be, a lot of new members of the legislature, even, both House and Senate. We'll have a new Speaker of the House. Speaker Joe Strauss has declined to seek reelection, both to his House seat and the Speaker's office, so there's going to be a run, there's probably half a dozen candidates right now, and another half a dozen that are, that are mentioned as possible Speaker candidates. So there'll be changes in the House in particular, and there'll be some additions of some new senators. I think your delegation has proven by their experience and their diligence that they'll continue to get good committee assignments and be able to deliver for their constituents and, and for the, the county. So we're excited about that. The pace is going to pick up dramatically after the primary. Being elected officials, y'all know you're, you're, when you're up, you're working hard, and it's, it takes a lot of time, and those things that have been piling up during the primary season tend to start getting addressed shortly thereafter. So I'm going to hit the highlights here. There are probably, what, a couple of hundred interim charges for committees that deal with Hurricane Harvey. Lot of that is focused down on the coast, of course, but there's a lot of work going to be done down there, but some opportunities that may present themselves for us. They have a problem with stormwater along the coast. El Paso County has a problem with stormwater. There's going to be discussion about how to either create entities, or have some kind of financing or something to address stormwater issues. So we're going to be watching that very, very carefully. I hate to say it, but I think it's a fact, we're going to continue to deal with the tax on the property tax system, efforts to change the rollback rate, appraisal practices, et cetera. I think we can look forward to working, continuing to work on those issues, and both the House and the Senate will be looking at those issues during the interim here. The Speaker of the House appointed a Committee on Economic Competitiveness. Their report's not out yet, but I expect it to be very substantive, given the witness list they had. They identified, over a number of hearings, a very large number of goals and, and barriers that need to be surmounted for Texas to keep moving forward, and there are things that are, are going to be particularly important in El Paso County. Workforce development being one of the primary issues. How to deal with regulation. How to deal with regulation in, in some of the unincorporated areas, and whether counties need more ordinance-making authority, for example, to deal with runoff from rain. I think you're going to continue to see things along the lines of border security. And to show you sort of the polar, at least currently, the, the polar differences between the, the House and Senate, where the House has a, is, will have proposals about workforce needs, in particular, the Senate will have an interim study on employment practices, really targeted at immigration, whether employers are, are screening people in their employment applications. There'll be review of the state jail system on both sides of the Capitol Building. They'll be addressing opioid substance abuse on both sides. El Paso County has a huge interest in the funding for UTEP. There's a commission, a select committee that just met the first time the other day that's about the funding formulas for higher education. There'll be an election security committee over in the Senate. Since you conduct elections, it's likely to come your direction. We'll probably need to have some input and develop and organize some input from the county on that. And also, there's a Select Committee on Ports, Innovation, and Infrastructure that Representative Ortega is a member of, and the, the legislature's been thoughtful enough to realize that El Paso's a port, and put, and put Representative Ortega on that, on that committee. I have not even scratched the surface on all of the charges that have been given to the Standing House and Senate Committees and Select Committees. So there's a lot of work going to be done this year, and we will, and that's going to really kick off starting about March 7. And your lobby team will be on top of it. Very much appreciate being able to represent y'all for five sessions. We look forward to doing the work to get you prepared for the next session during the remainder of the year. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them. If not, I'll defer to Claudia and let her talk to you about how we're going to go about organizing that. Thank you.
Good morning, Court, and let me just also say, Claudia Russell here, that I also want to express my gratitude for being able to work for El Paso County for as long as we have. It's always been a pleasure, and it's always, so, so I feel so good to, to, to bring ideas to the, to the state legislature that's about efficient government. They like that, and we come up with some really good ideas here, so it's, it's a pleasure to work for y'all.
Claudia, before you get started, I think there's a clicker up there.
Oh, okay.
Can you change the slide to that second page there?
Okay, so this is, is something that we're, it's just a proposal, of course, that's subject to your approval, but we wanted to just throw out a timeline and, and, and talk about what we would like, would like to see the agenda process. We always want to start early, the earlier the better. We, we, we certainly know that things always do come up, and we are, we're prepared to handle that, but the, the earlier that we can get our, our thoughts and our process in, the more time that we have to work on it, and, and more time, the earlier we can get it to Legislative Council, the earlier they can get it back to us. So we're just, you know, really trying to push a little bit earlier, meaning that we would start in February and March, it would, this coming up March, just trying to get to the departments and come up with the, the very first round of proposals, and start working on that. In April, we're going to be contacting the Texas Association of Counties and seeing if they might do, would they do a roundtable out here, and we'll coordinate with them and come out, come back out here to continue to, to work with them as well. So that would give us, and then we have listed in June, coming back out to brief the court again on what progress we've made and what, what's actually been crafted on the agenda. And a little bit earlier than normal, we, we have, we have selected the end of August or sometime in August to try to get the court to approve its agenda. Normally, we, it's usually around the end of September, October, but if we could push it to August, it's just, it's more time for us to get our work done. And again, working on closer to when session starts, that would give us time, if we have the agenda, y'all have already approved your agenda, then that, that gives us time to provide it to the delegation and get their input and, and, and start the process. So again, this is tentative subject to y'all's approval, but if, if that, if that's something that y'all are in agreement with, then that's hopefully how we'll proceed.
And we're not set up for any action today, Commissioners, but in this transition year, I really wanted to make sure that, that the five of us had the opportunity, and as much time as possible, to get the agenda crafted and done, so that all of you felt comfortable with what was to expect, be expected come the next legislative session. As Claudia mentioned before, we would typically pass our agenda in September, get that to our delegation, have them sift through the proposals and see what they wanted to carry. We thought August would be a better timeframe this year, so that we have four months then to really start to get some of our data together, our talking points together, and come January 1, we're ready to rock and roll, and most of our bills, hopefully at that point, will have been filed. And what we'll do throughout this period, if there are bills that we were, that were on our agenda last session, that we really feel confident about, we may even start to get drafts ready for those now, so that we are just ahead of the game more than we ever have been, been before. But we do have a really great lobbying team that has, has really helped create some success for us over the last several sessions. So are there any questions, Commissioners?
No, I, I just wanted to echo what the judge just said, that it is good to know that we have friends in Austin, that we have more friends in Austin, and that we, when we have questions, all of you have been very accessible to me, to my office, in reference to things that we are pushing. So, thank you.
And the lobbyists have a full slate of meetings today and tomorrow. We're meeting with some of the-
That's right, we look forward to meeting with, with you all.
But we will, over the next couple of months, they'll be meeting with each department and, and others as more proposals come in, so.
Right, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. There's no action on this item, Ms. Petecek.
Thank you, Judge. Item 6B, receive a presentation recognizing the Strategic Employee Health and Wellness Plan, Top Point Achievers.
Good morning.
Morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Andy Gers. I'm the Wellness Coordinator with Human Resources, and the purpose of this presentation is to recognize our top wellness point achievers for 2017. And before, before we recognize the winners, I'd like to provide the court with a brief overview of our Wellness Incentive Program, and also a little summary of some of the events that we held for 2017. So this chart here displays, on the left-hand column, all of the wellness activities or events an employee can participate in throughout the year. And only employees who enrolled on a medical plan with the county are eligible to participate in the events themselves and also receive incentives. So for each event they can participate in, they can also receive two sets of incentives. The middle-hand column would be, they get a raffle entry for each item they complete. And in addition to that, they also get a set amount of points for each wellness item they complete as well. they complete as well. And at the end of the year, we hold a raffle in which we give away several $1,000 gift cards, $750 gift cards, as well as $500 gift cards for employees who have participated in events throughout the year. In addition to that, we also do a points giveaway for all the points they accumulate throughout the year. And just to give you an idea of what we give away, this chart here, this is a, a example of the different tiers of prizes that we give away throughout the year for employees who accumulate the points. So the minimum amount of points to receive prizes would be 80. So for example, if an employee receives 80 points, they would get all items within that tier group. And then for each subsequent tier that they achieve, they accumulate additional prizes. So if someone gets 120 points, for example, they would receive everything on this pyramid This is a brief summary of some of the events we held in 2017. We had throughout the three locations, through the downtown, juvenile probation, and the sheriff's annex, we had 11, 11 wellness seminars. We've also had been privileged to have Zumba classes here at the county courthouse on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And we also held Zumba classes at juvenile probation from the months of August to November. And altogether, we had a total of 70 classes and events and a total of 802 employees attend those events. In addition, we also had four onsite wellness screenings, and these screenings are held. We have one at the downtown HR office, one at juvenile probation, and then one at sheriff's office. For each set of screenings, we have each of those three locations, and we had a total of four. And this past year, we also held a screening for the first time at Fabian's, in which we had 39 employees. And these are individuals from the road and bridge normally who wouldn't have the opportunity to go to one of the other screenings. So this was, you know, significant. This was our first time and there was a great turnout, and we hope to have this again this, this year as well. And we also had a total of three employee health fairs. We had two at the downtown courthouse and we had one at the sheriff's office as well.
These are very popular. They're hard to get into, which is a good thing. There's a high demand.
Yes. Well, just, just to touch on that point, our first screening of the year is coming up March 13th through 15th. And we currently have 96 employees scheduled to take the one here downtown. And that's our highest number to date, and that's set to be our largest screening, screening to date as well. So the word is definitely getting out about, you know, wellness within the county and the program, and that's evidenced by the first screening, for example. And this is just an example of the form employees would submit when they are turning in their points. And that's available on our internet page. All right. So before we get into the point earners, we'd like to do a special recognition for our Zumba, resident Zumba instructor, Liz Romero. So Liz is with the county attorney. We've been fortunate enough to have Liz as our Zumba instructor since June of 2017. She's a certified Zumba instructor. She's volunteering her time. She doesn't receive any compensation, and she loves to do Zumba. She's very motivational. She's very motivational. She's developed a very dedicated class following, as you see back there.
I have a feeling Commissioners' Court is going to be empty after this presentation.
I tried to get her to do a sample Zumba presentation, but she wasn't having it today.
Well, there's a surprise. You're going to have to do it now.
So Liz, in appreciation of your outstanding efforts in promoting employee wellness by volunteering your time to teach Zumba classes for El Paso County employees in 2017, we'd like to present you this certificate of appreciation.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Take a bow and then, yeah, see. Appreciate you. Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you, Liz. Thanks. So now we will get into the top wellness point achievers for 2017. So for the year of 2017, we had 65 employees submit wellness points forms. And of those 65, only 23 were able to receive prizes, which means they had a minimum of 80 points. And the following five employees were the top prize earners of 2017, which means they had reached the top tier of 120 points. Those employees are Yvonne Lindstrom from District Clerk, Joanna Fadwa of Human Resources, Maria Gonzalez of Human Resources, Melissa Contreras of the county attorney as well, and Priscilla Kincaid of the sheriff's office. So those were the top five point earners of 2017. And our number one point achiever, where is she? Yvonne Lindstrom. Come on up. So Yvonne scored the highest. She received 125 points for 2017. I met Yvonne last year at one of my health coaching sessions. Since then, she's been highly motivated with regards to wellness and helping others to achieve wellness goals as well. And in addition to that, Yvonne is our, one of our new 2018 wellness ambassadors. So Yvonne, we'd like to give you this certificate of appreciation as well.
Thank you.
And we hope to have you continue on with all your wellness motivation and keep spreading the word to others. Thanks, Yvonne. Congratulations. And that'll conclude my presentation for the 2017 top prize earners. Did the Court have any questions?
No, we appreciate all the work that's gone into transforming our health awareness and getting employees engaged. I know there are several really exciting things coming on the horizon for the county, and the healthier our workforce, the healthier we are as an organization, and the lower our costs when it comes to the risk pool fund. And so we really appreciate not only the work you're doing, but the employees really staying on top of this and staying engaged. Really, it's for your benefit, so thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Commissioners.
There goes the crowd. Ms. Pizza, I don't know if your microphone is off or...
There was an item pulled from consent.
Do we want to go ahead and take those items? Why don't we go ahead and, can we take item seven? It's already been read into the record, and then we'll go back to the consent items.
So you do, I can read item seven again, Judge. Yes, my microphone's on now. Thank you. I'm sorry. Item seven, auditor. Pursuant to the Texas Government Code Title 10, Section 2256.005, please approve and adopt the investment policy as of February 22, 2018. This investment policy, when adopted, will supersede the policy adopted June 12, 2017.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge. Jim Outback, County Auditor's Office, financial reporting. We were presenting the same investment policy with the changes that were discussed on your Thursday meeting, and that's it.
And just for the, because I know that we have on the backup the changes, and they weren't, they weren't extraordinary changes, but if you could just give us a quick overview of what some of those changes were?
Yes, it was one change in word from exposed to exposure, and it was the change of putting back in the ethics requirement for the broker dealers on our investment policy.
Okay. Commissioners, did, we did hear this presentation on Thursday. Are there any other questions that you might have, Commissioner Hagerty?
Some of the other stuff is we're putting in the ability to do, to have a person. So I mean, it's not just those. Those were the corrections from Thursday, but the changes are...
The changes are we add the investment advisor.
Right. And that just gives us the opportunity to have one or multiple investment advisors to be able to look at investments for, for our funds.
Right.
Boo to approve.
That was the judge?
It was, pardon?
It was Judge Ford.
The judge, it was the second. Thank you. Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Judge, would you like to go back to the item taken from consent?
Yes, please.
Item 3D. Thank you. Item 3D, approve and authorize the county judge to sign a historic site tourist promotion and preservation services agreement with the San Elizario Genealogy and Historical Society, a Texas nonprofit corporation for the tourist promotion of the historic Los Portales Museum and Old County Jail located in San Elizario, Texas for $42,188 for a period beginning October 1, 2017 through September 30, 2018. Funds are available in account SR Tour Prom Los Portales, contract number 20170795.
I pulled this item not because I have a problem with the item. I just get very frustrated when we're about to be five months into a contract and we're just now approving it. I understand there's some issues with this, but it's something we really have to work on. It's extremely frustrating to see something five months in that we're just now approving. And there's a couple of things in this agenda item that are similar to this and something we've really got to fix. It's, I know we've had this conversation in, in years past, and it seems like we're going back to the old, getting it done later and later and later. And I just get really frustrated when we're approving items months and months after the contract has already been in place. What happens if we don't approve this item today and we've already five months in? It, it's, it's a pet peeve of mine. We need to stop.
Jose Quinones with Economic Development. And I, I agree with you. I think the items do need to be moved up as far as the timing and all. We've been working very closely with the, with the applicant, CEGS, the nonprofit organization. There has been several things that, that have delayed it on their part in getting us information and making sure that everything was, was, was tidy. We had meetings with the county attorney's office and all those changes that we needed to make sure, to come, to make sure that the applicant was in agreement, took us this much amount of time to get it on the, on the contract. We were ready last month. However, there was a, a request to pull the item by Commissioner Bettis' office. We went back to his office and we worked that out. And so now this agreement is back on, on the agenda for your approval. And I do apologize for those delays. I will definitely make sure that we improve on this process that you don't see these contracts coming back to you five months ago. I'm going to work with the, with these nonprofits to ensure that we get them up early in the year, as early as the start of the fiscal year.
Do you want to say anything, Betty?
Well, my, yes, sir. The only thing I would want to add is, we did continue, we do have a contract in place that we were operating under on, and it's under the terms of a month-to-month until the new one is replaced. So we did have contract terms to operate under. This contract needed a lot of cleanup, if you will, because it was a very old contract, and it had not been changed in a long time to address several issues that needed to be addressed between the parties.
I don't disagree, and I understand there's reasons for that to happen, but there's multiple agenda items that I'm seeing now where we're, we're approving stuff after, after the fact, and it's not a good way to do business.
Commissioner Leon.
Betty, before you, we get off the subject, one of the things that probably would be helpful to me is when one of those contracts has slipped into the month-to-month, can the Court be notified that this contract is now going into the month, month-to-month period?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Boo to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
Information Technology, item eight. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the agreement between El Paso County and Axon Enterprise Incorporated for the maintenance and management of the TASER handheld weapon and personal body cameras for use in the sheriff's office. This contract is a five-year contract in the amount of $1,715,416.70. Further, approve the reallocation of funds from account GFITD SVC Fee Cloud Storage to account GFITD Mint Rep TASER and Body Cam, contract number 20170663. Funding is available in account GFITD SVC Fee Cloud Storage. And if approved, funding will be transferred into account GFITD Mint Rep TASER and Body Cam.
Good morning. It's a long agenda item.
That's quite a title. Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Chris Dathas, your Chief Technology Officer. In July of 2016, Commissioners' Court approved the purchase of TASER handheld weapons, personal body cameras, and unlimited cloud storage for video processing from TASER International Corporation. The item before you represents a continuation of that agreement over the next five years. The, the action also reallocates funding to a more appropriate expenditure source, and ITD and the sheriff's office recommend approval.
Hagerty?
I, I remember this was a, a big thing we talked about in 2016. Have we seen the big benefit with the unlimited storage and easy access of being able to pull the data?
So Commissioner, yes. We checked with TASER just before coming here, and we're over about 21, 22 terabytes of data that they're currently storing. We think that's at the very inception of this program, and we think that's going to balloon very hot, it's going to accelerate very quickly.
No, I don't, I, I just wanted to make sure we're able to, because one of the things I remember them saying was going to be good is we'd be able to have easy access to find the data if we needed for lawsuits or, or police officer, or sheriff's officer complaints and something of that nature. And we're, are we actually able to get that?
For that, I defer to the sheriff's office or the, the district attorney's office.
Holly Light with the county attorney's office, and I also have Tom Witten here with sheriff's office. I supervise the internal affairs unit, so I do know that we have access directly to it and we download, I mean, probably, I don't go to the movies anymore. I just watch Body Cam videos. That's all I do. So I have more than the enough access to, to the iCloud. We are currently working, I, I need to, I'm setting up a meeting with the DA's office. They have access as well, but we're trying to set up a little bit more direct access. So we still have some issues there. But definitely with the sheriff's office, we can download easily, the sergeant and internal affairs can download, and I'm sure that Tom can attest to CID and, and other sections access.
So you're comfortable with a five-year contract?
Absolutely.
Boo to approve.
I have a, I have some questions too.
Holly, I, I just have a quick question. It refers to the sheriff's department and all this backup. Does that include the constables also?
Yes, it does. The language I had suggested for the agenda item included the constables. I don't know how that got left off, but yes, all the constables have Body Cams issued to them as well. They have access to the storage space, and I've even assisted the, the constables offices on PIA's concerning that. So, so yes, they have access as, as well.
Okay, thank you.
Some questions came up regarding the, the, the data and who owns the data when, I mean, when it's, when it's recorded, who owns the video when it's recorded? And, and if we end up at some point ever getting rid of this contract, does that belong to us or, or does the, does the company keep it?
The, the data is ours. All of those recordings are ours. Now, if at some point in time we do not renew, then obviously it will, we will have to work with IT as far as what we're going to do with moving the data to another location. And obviously, that's going to depend on how big it is and what our other IT options are available, but...
Obviously, the reason we didn't, I mean, we, we, we went with, with the company like this is because they have a cloud and we don't have the capacity to, to hold all the data ourselves, right?
Right. The whole idea was that this was unlimited storage space, which, I mean, I, I think that Chris can probably answer the question of how hard it would be for us to store 24, you know, 22 terabytes of, of information. And that's just the beginning. That's only after a year of the contract. I mean, I, I hate to see how much data we're going to have after, after the fifth year's done on the contract. So yes, it, it is something that is always in the back of my mind when you're doing a contract like this, that when the contract ends, if we don't renew, you know, we're going to have to do something with that because the data is ours. It's our responsibility, and we will have to figure out a transition plan to move that data somewhere else if we don't continue with a contract with, with these individuals.
I know we're, we're going to be approving this for five years, so maybe we should start working. I mean, we don't know if it's going to, if we're going to continue after the five years, I understand, but I think it'd be, you know, a good idea to actually have a plan.
Well, and one of the things that, that I had discussed when we had had meetings with TASER, now Axon, about these issues, and one of the things that I think that we're going to have to work on is all of these cases, when someone uploads something to the cloud, it's generally tied to a... generally tied to a case number. And so one of the things that we need to do is set retention periods on all of these cases. Right now, the rules are that you have to keep it a minimum of 90 days, but if it's assigned to a case, then right now we've got unlimited on it. We're just keeping it forever if it's assigned to a case. Well, what we're ultimately going to need to do is to work with the DA's office to set when these cases have been resolved and to set reasonable retention periods thereafter. So ultimately, the old stuff that is no longer of any use and any value because the cases have long since been resolved can ultimately be deleted. But right now, the lawyer in me that's afraid of lawsuits, you know, this is brand new, I want to keep it all, at least until we figure out good, solid ways on the retention. But TASER and now Axon has assured us that there are ways that we can set different retention periods on these things depending on what kind of case evolves out of the incident. And thus, for instance, on a murder case, we could set unlimited, but on a criminal trespass case or a DWI case, we can set something in the way of a shorter retention period, which will help us keep the levels to a manageable amount. But right now, until we really have something in place that I feel very comfortable with, I prefer that we're just keeping it all until, since we do have that luxury, until we can work with the DA's office and really set up something that I feel protects us from a liability standpoint, litigation standpoint, protects the DA's office from a prosecution standpoint.
Yeah, I just, I agree. I just worry that if at some point we're not happy with the service that this contract is providing, you know, we could have a big issue, you know. So I think it'd be good to try to look at what we can do. I mean, I think it's great to start talking about, you know, retention deadlines and things like that to make sure that we're covering ourselves, but at the same time not having to deal with, you know, all of a sudden trying to figure out where we're going to put this information if we don't contract with this company in the future.
And absolutely, and of course, the thing with technology like this is it's always evolving, so we're going to have to rely on IT to keep up on all of the latest trends as far as storage space and capabilities so that as we get to that last. But you're right, I think that, you know, when we're in year four, we need to automatically be working on where we're going to go for year six because it's going to be a transition that's going to take more than 60 days, more than 90 days. So we're going to have to start working on, looking at that a year or two out before, to work on that transition plan.
One more quick question while you're there. The data, is it just when it's important and like stuff happening or is there like days of just people drinking coffee and driving around?
No, we actually, as part of the law now requires that we have a policy and I just actually finished revising the policy for the sheriff's office. And by statute, we cannot require officers to record 24/7. And I know that that's been an issue, I think there have been a couple of constables offices that wanted to just require them to leave their body cams on 24/7, but the statute actually prohibits that. So for instance, our policy basically says that anytime that we have entered into an encounter with a citizen, that we're supposed to turn it on to record that encounter. But it also has provisions in there that if we're going into private spaces, that we have to try to honor privacy issues as well and turn off body cams when it's inappropriate because we have entered private spaces, unless of course it's necessary for the investigation. I mean, sometimes you have to go into a private space as part of an investigation and you need to leave it on. So no, we have policies that outline when you're supposed to turn it off, how long you leave it on, and there's policies for getting rid of it if you accidentally left it on. Because the reality is, is someone occasionally, I saw a video the other day, again with one of the constables, because someone had put in a request for it, that it was like six hours of video because the guy had basically just left his body cam on. And so I'm like fast forwarding through it going, oh, I just, I can't watch six hours of video, trying to make sure that, you know, what was pertinent and what was just, I'm driving in the car and nothing's going on kind of video. So there are going to be those issues that we have to address. The sheriff's office has addressed it by policy and certainly be willing to work with the constables offices to make sure that they address those issues as well.
Thank you.
And I appreciate the effort to creating those policies. That was one of the questions I had is the timeframe to keep them and such limitations and getting rid of what we don't need and keeping what we do. So thank you for taking a look at that.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Public Works, item nine. Approve and authorize the allocation of funds in the amount of $83,257 to supplement allocated CIP 2017 funds for a new roof at the Road and Bridge Fabians Warehouse. Further, approve the reallocation of funds from account CP Improv 01 Miscellaneous to account CIP 17 R&amp;B Renovations Repairs to fund the project.
Morning.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Robin Sully, Director of Facility Maintenance. CIP 2017 funds in the amount of $150,000 were allocated for the replacement of the Road and Bridge Fabians Warehouse roof. Once the project was released, as a formal bid, it became apparent that allocated funds was not sufficient to complete the project. We are now requesting an additional $83,257 to complete this project.
Commissioner Hagerty?
What are we doing to try to get closer to the correct amounts? Because we come up with these numbers and it seems like sometimes it's being done in a vacuum. I'll use a later example of the elevators that we're going to talk about, that was a little off. And it just seems like we're just throwing a number in to get a number and then when we start getting bids, we realize we're not anywhere close. What are we doing to try to narrow down the first ask to the final number?
Commissioner, in this particular case, what we did was we went into Region 19. We couldn't find a vendor to come in, a contractor to come in to meet this quote for $150,000. Asking for a quality, top-quality roof, which is a TPO roof. They came in at $150,000, we couldn't find the one to bid for that amount. We went into Region 19, we had the contractor to come out, do an assessment, and they gave us a final quote.
Mr. Sully, but why did we request $150,000 through CIP? How did we come up with that number?
That was a quote, that was a, I'm sorry.
I can speak to that. Good morning, Judge Commissioners, Norma Palacios. Initially, when we received this quote, a lot of vendors are hesitant to give us quotes thinking we're going to share them and so now they might be the lowest bidder, but not really being able to compete with everybody else. So what we do is we try to get preliminary quotes and get as close as possible, and we continue to do this, but we've also experienced that a lot of the vendors are saying, you know, we've seen what you advertise are quotes and so we're no longer able to compete with everybody else. And so what we're trying to do is try to identify vendors who'll give us an idea on how much we are, we should be prepared to pay for this type of projects.
And that's another one of my problems, it seems like we're out there telling people how much our budget is and even then, a lot of times we're not giving that number, but we do a very poor job of telling people, yeah, we think this is going to cost us a million dollars. You're right, it's gonna. I just don't understand why we seem to be so loose with telling people, this is what we can spend on this project and then we're either getting bids that we're not even close because we're way off. There's got to be a better way.
So we didn't have an amount when we asked somebody to come and give us a proposal and they went out there to the Fabians Warehouse and that was more or less, but they gave us actually a quote for about $150,000. So when we submitted our request through CIP, that's what we had gotten, $150,000. Now that we're ready to do the roof, we could not find somebody who would do it for $150,000. Aside from that, they found other things as they start looking into it, a little bit deeper into it. What we've also found that some of the vendors will say, we'll come out and give you a proposal, but we're going to charge you for it. We're not just going to give you a proposal and then you don't go with us and we spent all this time evaluating your roof. So this is how we came up with $150,000. It was an actual proposal.
But when the time came, they weren't anywhere near that price. I guess that's another problem too. Why are they coming up with a price of $150,000 when the time comes adding $85,000 on top of that? If they're giving us proposals in the first place.
We actually did go out there, work with purchasing to bid it out. And maybe Joe can talk a little bit more about it since they're the ones that bid it out.
Good morning.
Good morning. Joe Lopez, Assistant Purchasing Agent, County of Opaux. The problem with a lot of these quotes that come in, the CIP quotes, is we're trying to hit a deadline to get money involved and to ask for it. And so you get a general idea of specifications and you're getting a general quote, but when you get down to the actual looking at the project and the details of the project, that's where you find out things. This particular roof had some buckling points in it that they said, you should probably replace this deck before you put the roof over it, otherwise, you know, you're going to have a problem with it anyway. Okay? And those things come up. We've discussed trying to find better ways to do this and really doing it right, not necessarily fast to meet the deadline for the call for projects. A very good example is one coming up later on the elevators. I don't know where they got the quote, but it was nowhere close. And then trying to obtain the specifications, everybody knows what elevators should do. Nobody really knew how to get our elevators from where we are to where we want to be and how to fill that gap. They sought the guidance of an engineer? Well, engineers know how to design the structure to place an elevator in there, how to modernize the elevator, that didn't really help. So what we ended up doing was we found elevator contractors who also worked as consultants. We let, we picked some that weren't on a state contract because this thing had been going on a long time. And we did a RFQ to hire somebody to give us...
Mr. Lopez? Sorry, excuse me, we're going a little bit outside the agenda. This is Christina Sanchez, Assistant County Attorney. We need to bring it back to the Fabians Warehouse discussion.
I was just answering how we get off of, how we're not meeting the...
Right, and that's outside the scope.
Okay, well, we got the consultant, he promised not to bid, that's how we got better specs. We could, we probably should do that with the roofing, we seem to have trouble with roofs. And the biggest problem is what we spec and what we warrant, want warranted sometimes, there is a gap there, okay? And quality and workmanship. So that's where we need to tie these things in. And your comment about the budget, any questions that they come to us on the bid about what we have budgeted for the amount? We tell them that's not germane to the issue, they need to just go, they don't need that information to give us the quote.
Purchasing does not disclose budget.
A lot of times it's talked about in Commissioners Court.
Oh, yeah. A lot of them know the budget before we bid it.
And that's the problem.
But in answer to your question, and we've been working very closely with Norma and her staff and working more on the backend, so instead of you seeing this thing get approved and then, you know, five months later, we're moving to awarding a bid, there's actually the time behind the scenes before you get asked for the money. And that's what we're trying to correct.
Thank you. Commissioner? Norma, before you sit down, you mentioned that some of the companies will want to charge the county for going out and giving an estimate for the estimate. And I don't blame them, I mean, it makes sense, they spend a lot of time. For the Fabians roof, what kind of cost would that entail?
We didn't get a, because we already had a proposal when we submitted our request for CIP, but in the past, they've talked about $150,000, their time, for their time per hour. And so we don't have an exact amount for this roof since this had already been identified through CIP, Commissioner.
But you're looking at the possibility of maybe two hours of inspection that would amount to about $300 for a better idea of what it's going to cost us.
Yes, sir, and it will vary depending on the project, but I had already discussed with Betsy and we had talked about that we would probably have to start investing in that type of work.
Yeah, I don't blame a company for spending all this time, then they may not get the contract, which makes sense that they do charge for their time.
And that's the problem, Commissioner, you end up on a slippery slope here where you have a vendor giving you a recommendation on a roof of what product he uses and his, how he does it. That's why on the elevators, we said you cannot bid on it if you're giving us the specifications helping us with the bid. And that's something we've been talking about, this, yeah, it won't be that much on roofs, really, but it's going to have to be probably a disinterested third party that doesn't want to bid on it because then they have a dog in the fight, so to speak.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve? I will second.
And who made the motion, please?
Well, I thought maybe Commissioner Hagerty had, so I will take that back. I will motion to approve the item. I'll give you a second.
The judge has motioned to approve. Do we have a second, please? Thank you, Commissioner Leon. Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Begrudgingly, aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Purchasing, item 10. Approve and authorize the modernization of eight elevators for the county courthouse and parking garage to Thyssen Elevator Corporation using TCPN Contract R150801. Purchasing approved on February 12th, 2018. Funding is available in account CP, CPCTH, SIMP 12, renovations, account GFPRK, GR, GEN, Hans Cap Out, Equip.
Now we can talk about the elevators.
Okay. This was a project, Joe Lopez, Assistant Purchasing Agent, County of Opaux. This was a project that was approved by CIP quite a while back. During the initial process of trying to bid this out or find, became pretty evident that we were nowhere close to knowing what we wanted and we didn't want to put good money to bad and have to just renovate again. So as I mentioned, I deterred in the other item, we ended up hiring a consultant and they went very detailed and looked at all the elevators and gave us a detailed plan on what we needed. We solicited quotes from two major elevator companies that are on the state contracts that are familiar with this size and scope of a building and Thyssen Krupp was the best offer and this is what we're bringing together is the contract, it's based off of the cooperative contract and this should cover all the renovations, the modernization of the elevators for the county.
Does this include the freight elevator?
It should include.
The freight elevator. I don't think it does. And two parking.
The sixth main and then the parking garage.
And what's the difference in the pricing from when we had originally looked at the item, do you know?
Just a very detailed scope of work.
The cost?
The cost, ooh. I believe the original estimate was somewhere around $400,000.
Yeah, like 1.3 million.
And that probably would have covered maybe one elevator or two.
No, the original was one point, I think it was 1.2 or 1.3 million.
No, about $700,000, it was divided in different phases and that's... It was divided in different phases. We talked initially about just doing three of the elevators here and then two of the ones over there. And so initially, we had about $700,000 for the elevators from CIP money, right, Gabby? And then we've requested the additional funds so that now we're at the 1.7.
What's the timeline? When do we hope to have the elevators fixed?
2087.
They're going to, they're...
We could get just one answer, please.
We're looking at about approximately two years timeline.
They'll be phasing it in. I think they're starting with the...
They're starting with the garage because those are the ones that are, need the work. Well, all of them need the work, but those are the ones that need immediate attention. So it'll be the garage and then they will move this way and do the ones here in the hallway.
When is the garage expected to be, timeline, what's the timeline on the garage?
Once it's to get approved, they're going to start in the garage. It'll be around June. It's going to take six months just to order the equipment.
Here's my question. Did the bids come in before or after we approved the one point, the additional amounts of money?
The bids came in before, they were opened October 24th, 2017.
Okay, so we'd already received the bids before we told them how much money we were going to have.
Right, they had already put in their bids before we'd allocated the additional funding. Right, they had already put in their bids before we'd allocated the additional funding.
Do we start in June? Do we have a timeline for how long it might take for the elevators in the garages?
I have a timeline. Judge, the timeline is about two years.
But the, but the garage ones are approximately nine to 12 months.
They'd be ready in June.
Right. That's when they're gonna start.
Oh, that's, they start in June.
Right, and, and it'll be approximately nine to 12 months for the garage ones to be completed.
Now, are you, you're doing one at a time, I assume, so that someone can get in the garage?
Commissioner DeWes explained to me and the schedule that I have, they're going to repair the one that's in the garage that's down and to include one out here. They're gonna do two of them at the same time.
There will be access for... We're gonna make sure that you can use an elevator at all times.
Correct.
Something that would, I'd also like to share with the court is that originally we were only going to do three elevators. So then we decided with the court's approval to do all of them at the same time because we've seen that, we've been working on this for years, on this project. And so the cost continues to go up. And so that's why we came to the court to do the additional three elevators. And that's why it's a significant difference of what was allocated through CIP to what we're paying for the elevators, for the renovation of the elevators now.
So you're saying what was allocated originally was just for three elevators, not for seven?
Three, we were gonna do the three and the ones out there.
Okay.
Commissioner Leon?
And Norma, just one quick question. The, the 1.7, I guess as they do the work, then we pay whatever percentage of that, not the entire 1.7 upfront?
Yes, sir. We only pay a portion, just like we do all of our other projects. We pay in phases.
And what do you estimate to be completed that we will be having to pay out this fiscal year?
We don't have the exact numbers, but we will be glad to share them with the court. We can send an email when we get back to our office.
I, I think it makes a big difference because we're not looking at 1.7. We'd be looking at significantly less for this budget year.
We've, we've already voted to approve the, the amounts of money. We're just approving the vendor today. We've already, we've already approved the amount of money already.
The money's been allocated, but we would just be paying it out as the work is being done.
As the work is, okay, thank you.
Other questions, Commissioners?
To approve.
Second. Commissioner Betis is absent. Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge Vogt?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 11. Approve and authorize the award of RFP 17041. Email security encryption for the County of El Paso to SHI Government Solutions, Austin, Texas, using DIR contract number DIRTSO 3926, in the amount of $126,700. Purchasing approved on February 8th, 2018. Funding is available in CIP 17 ITD Software County.
Joe Lopez, Assistant Purchasing Agent, County of El Paso. This is an RFP that we solicited for the IT Department for their email security and encryption for the countywide email system. We received four responses and they were, they were vetted out through our RFP evaluation system, Deborah's Detailed RFP Evaluation System. And SHI Government Solutions was the highest ranked and picked the best response for qualifications and with cost for this project. We referenced the Texas DIR number because in their quote, they agreed to use state pricing and the caveats in the state contract to do this project. And we are recommending that you award it to them.
Move to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge Vogt?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 12. Approve and authorize the purchasing agent to solicit proposals for the Third Party Group Medical and Dental Plan Administration, Pharmacy Benefit Management, Stop Loss Reinsurance, Employee Assistance Program, Section 125 Plan Administration, Flexible Spending Accounts, Dependent Care Accounts, and Health Savings Account Administration, COBRA Administration, Value Added Services, including but not limited to Medicare Advantage Plans and Part D Prescription Drug Plans, in accordance with Local Government Code 262.030. The purchasing agent has reviewed use of the request for proposal process.
All right, and Joe Lopez, Assistant Purchasing Agent, County of El Paso. We are requesting that you authorize the purchasing department to use the RFP process for this solicitation. There's a lot of detail, a lot of moving parts to be utilizing a straight bid for this.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge Vogt?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 13. Approve and authorize the award of two transit buses for the County of El Paso to Creative Bus Sales Incorporated using Texas Smart Buy 304T 18070A1 and authorize the purchasing agent to issue a purchase order for the total project cost of $224,930,056. $930,056.
I think that was 224,000.
224,930,056. Reform that, redo. 200, thank you. Funding, thank you. Funding is available in the account Transportation Investment Generation and in the account Rural Transit Federal 2017 Grants. Purchasing approved on February 8th, 2018.
Joe Lopez, Assistant Purchasing Agent, County of El Paso. Inflation is horrible, let me tell you.
We're used to the millions.
These are two buses requested out of a TIGER grant. We are utilizing the Smart Buy contract. We also looked at the buy board because of the timing issue. If we don't purchase the buses by a certain time, I believe we will lose the funding. This is the best price for bussings in this, and I believe Mr. Staple wants to add some...
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, Hilton Staple, Fleet Operations Director. I just want the court to be aware that these two buses will be powered by CNG, compressed natural gas. These will be the first two vehicles or equipment in the county that's powered with natural gas. There are some benefits to going natural gas. Natural gas is a lot cleaner than unleaded gasoline. It's also a lot cleaner than diesel fuel. The second benefit of going CNG is economics. Over the last 10 or so years, CNG has averaged about 98 cents per gallon, whereas gasoline and diesel, as we know, fluctuates between $2 and up to $5 per gallon. These buses, again, averages about 40,000 to 50,000 miles a year. So in essence, we're gonna be cutting about half the fuel costs per bus. Again, they would be CNG. So once these come in, we'll put them on the road, we'll evaluate them. If everything works out as we move forward, the goal is to replace all the rural transit buses with compressed natural gas. Again, it's better for the environment and there's definitely an economic cost associated with going CNG.
And I take it, Mr. Staple, that the, we have the facilities for maintenance and refueling?
Correct. Right now, the buses are housed at the depot downtown and CNG is readily available. We're already met with Sun Metro and it's just a matter of doing it in a local agreement with them and they're fine with it. And actually, we, we had an existing agreement with Sun Metro for that bus we had about eight years ago that was a, it's the one...
The bus we had?
It was, it belonged to Community Service. It was that bus that was a, like a prototype. So we're, actually, we already have an existing agreement with Sun Metro. It's just expired. So we'll just simply need to renew it. But CNG, Commissioner, to answer your question, is readily available. There's CNG on Montana at the main depot and there's CNG downtown.
It's readily available for these buses because they're going to be parked there. I've been talking to the court about CNG not being readily available for like our Fabens Warehouse.
Correct.
Montana Vista.
Correct.
But it will be available for the buses because they are housed out of that location.
And through the interlocal, there's no additional fees for their service?
No, we would just pay for what we use, just like we're paying with a fuel card right now.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner.
Move to approve? Second.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge Vogt?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
Grant applications. Approve the submission of county grant applications as listed and described. If awarded, all grant award agreements will be brought back to the Commissioners' Court for final acceptance and approval. Item 14. Approve and authorize the El Paso County Driving Mile Intoxicated DWI Drug Court Program to apply for funding available under the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration SAMSA grant in the amount of $1,866,707 for a five-year grant period. No match is required.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Letitia Vizcaino, Grant Analyst, and with me is Anna Dominguez. She is the Court Liaison for the DWI Court. And they are here to request permission to apply for this grant. It's a five-year grant for approximately $400,000 funding per year. They are requesting to hire one personnel, surveillance officer, and all other funding will go towards treatment services for their participants.
I know that we've applied for funding through the Governor's Office. Is this, is this a new grant or does this exist for us already?
This is actually a federal grant. It's federal funding and it's funded by the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Administration.
But is it a new grant or are we already receiving?
It is a new grant. Yes, it is. They have never received funding from this funding agency in the past.
Okay, perfect.
Crime services for treatment.
For direct services for treatment.
And they have chosen to partner with Aliviane, which is a local health provider.
And it's, and it's 1.8 million divided over five years or it's 1.8 million every year?
It's, it can be, it's potentially up to 400,000 per year. If they are funded for the entire project, then it's closer to $1 million.
Move to approve?
Second.
Was that Commissioner Stout?
Yes.
Okay, approved. And then the judge for second. Thank you. Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge Vogt?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
Item 15. Approve and authorize the Public Works Department to submit an application for the fiscal year 2018, Federal 5311 Rural Public Transportation Grant to the Texas Department of Transportation, TechDOT, in the amount of $30257. No county match is required. Additionally, authorize the county judge to sign the certificate of obligation as required by the grant.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioner, Sal Alonso from Public Works Department. Just wanted to make a correction for the record. The total amount that we originally had been authorized to receive by TechDOT was the $30257, but last week, we did receive an email that TechDOT added additional $9,000. So for the record, the new amount that we'll be applying for is $309,543 and zero cents.
So that's $309,543, Mr. Alonso? Okay, thank you.
And...
We're asking for a motion to approve as corrected, please.
Thank you. And this is just an annual application that we submit to TechDOT for funding and this would go towards the community service for all of our rural areas. Anthony, Bitten, Socorro, Westway County, Montana Vista, Odusis, Parks, Fabens, Ternio, surrounding areas.
Make a motion to approve as corrected.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge Vogt?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 16. Approve and authorize the El Paso County Sheriff's Office Criminal Investigation Division, Narcotics Section to apply for the Local Security Program Grant to the Office of the Governor, Homeland Security Grants Division, in the amount of $349,916.53 for grant period September 1st, 2018 through August 31st, 2019. The Local Security Program Grant is an overtime and mileage reimbursement grant and no match is required. Further, authorize the county judge to sign the attached resolution if approval is granted.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Sergeant Greer, Sergeant for the Narcotics Section of the Best County Sheriff's Office. This is Nancy Serrano. She's the grant program manager. I said in the documentation, we are here seeking approval to apply for the fiscal year 2019 grant for the amount of $349,916. It's strictly a reimbursement grant for overtime and mileage. There's no county match to this, this program.
And this is a, a grant that we've received in the past?
Yes, sir. We've been applying for it and receiving this grant for the past nine years.
Nine years, wow, okay. Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge Vogt?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
Thank you. Budget and Finance. Item 17. Approve Amendment Number 20 to the County of El Paso's 2017-2018 Operating Budget. This budgetary amendment will increase grants by $164,874 and decrease special revenue by $192,365, thus increasing the overall budget of $484,821,843.15 to $484,794,352.15.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Francisco Rios from the Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy Department. I would like to point out that in preparation for the fiscal year 2019 process, our department and the auditors worked together. We did a thorough review of all the accounts within Munis. We noticed a few incorrect long accounts and this BA is addressing some of those issues needing correction. First Journal 1850, we're transferring funds within the Civ 17. This is to correct the general ledger code from 433 to 431, and that's in the amount of $70,288 affecting the interest account. We're also transferring funds under the Sheriff CID enforcement, from the Sheriff CID enforcement clothing allowance to the Sheriff Patrol clothing allowance in the amount of $57 to cover the cost for clothing allowance expenses incurred. Transferring funds from the Sheriff Jail Annex to various Sheriff Jail, Sheriff Warrant accounts. This is to cover the cost for salary infringement expenses for personnel changes approved by the Chief Administrator on February 1st, 2018. We're transferring $10,932 from the salaries full-time regular to the salaries full-time regular on the sheriff warrants in the amount of $8,829, 675 in the social security, $1,353 in retirement, 41 in the insurance workers comp, 34 under the insurance unemployment. We're transferring funds from the Maintenance and Operations Account under the General and Administrative Account in the amount of $688 over to Human Resources Operating Expenses Miscellaneous to cover the cost for employee relations initiatives. We're transferring funds from the General and Administrative Operating Expenses General Account in the amount of $100,000 over to the Emergency Management Operating Expenses General.
Gabby Federer from the Budget and Fiscal Policy Department. This one is actually a correction. We're not transferring money from the General Administrative Account. It's a... It's a correction to one of the accounts that Mr. Rios was referring to before he started going over the budget transfers.
Thank you, Gabby. We're transferring funds from the El Paso County Mobility Projects. It's another correction item. We're correcting the division number under the professional services general account for $2,396,991. The land for $500,000 and the transfers out account for $395,222, once again to correct the long account. We're also correcting the long account for professional services under the El Paso County Mobility Projects in the amount of $3,009 and also the transfers out account in the El Paso County Mobility Projects in the amount of $24,778. We're transferring funds in the amount of $284 from the general and administrative maintenance and operations contingency account into the Sheriff Jail Annex operating expense miscellaneous account to account for the donations received for the POS program. We're transferring funds from the maintenance and operation, I'm sorry, maintenance and operations contingency account in the general administrative account in the amount of $360 into parking under community services and that's to cover the additional parking card. We're transferring funds within the 384th adult drug, actually, we're increasing the budget for the 384th adult drug court as awarded by the granting agency in the amount of $4,015 for participant, program participant and $4,015 for the contracted services. We're increasing the budget for the cops in school grant to reflect the match account received by the county. Transfers in by $157,359. Salaries full-time regular, $80,000. Social Security, $15,000. Retirement, $25,000. Insurance, health and dental, $30,000. Insurance workers comp, $5,000. Insurance unemployment, $2,359. We're also increasing the budget for the Slettero Socorro Sanelli Circle Route 15 grant for program income received, increasing program income by $3,500 and contracted services by $3,500. Journal 446, after discussing with the 384th District Court Department, they agreed to remove this transfer. It's no longer needed. They were going to book some travel, but I don't think they had enough time. Also, after discussing with the 384th SA, I'm sorry, the 384th District Court, they agreed to reduce Journal 452 to $2,000 instead of $5,000 and they're transferring from operating, I'm sorry, from contingencies, maintenance and operation over to operating expenses general to cover costs to order supplies. Journal 1261 is a correction for a transfer we did back in December. We are reducing transfers out by $192,365 and increasing operating expenses by $192,365 in the Coliseum tourist promotion. And Journal 1335, also to correct what we should have done back in December as requested by the county auditor's office, we're reducing transfers in by $192,365 and reducing contingencies, maintenance, operation by $192,365 in the county tourist promotion account. And then finally, in Roden Bridge, another correction where we're reducing the match program. It was set up as a match, but it wasn't supposed to be set up as a match. We're just transferring the $1,329,142 within the Roden Bridge contingencies, maintenance operation. We ask for your favorable approval. Thank you very much.
Judge, Commissioners, I also want to make one mention on one of the items that was discussed on here because there was a question about it recently. One of the items that I approved and asked the Budget Department to cover for us was all county departments that work in this area, department heads are required to pay for their own parking. When you work downtown, you're required to pay for your own parking. However, we have some departments that are not located downtown, such as medical examiners, community services, et cetera, and they park normally at their home offices. But when the department head or the staff have to come down here to pick up mail, come to a meeting at the courthouse, we provide a parking card for their department operations. So that is what one of these items are. I just want to be clear about that because there was questions about whether we pay parking for department heads. We do not pay parking for department heads who park in our garage. They have to pay for it themselves. But departments who come down here for picking, you know, picking up the mail at the courthouse or coming to a meeting at the courthouse or doing some kind of business transaction here, they have a card that allows them to come in or their staff to come in to the garage, be here for an hour and leave.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Why?
To do business downtown.
We charge employees who work here and department heads who work here to pay to park here every day, but the ones who get a discount every day don't have to pay it but get it free when the days they come here? That doesn't seem right.
They're coming for official business, right?
So is every single employee who comes to work here every day. I'm sorry, that's wrong. I have a problem with the fact that we pay for employees anyway, but to say because you don't have to pay normally, you don't have to pay for the one few days that you're stuck here, but the people who have to work here every day have to pay every day? That's wrong.
Well, I'm not going to argue with you about the people who have to work here every day and paying for parking, but I have a problem, for example, an office specialist at medical examiners who has to bring inter-office mail down here or who has to come to this location for transactional business to have to pay to do their job every day.
But the county clerk's staff who works down there makes $10 an hour, you have no problem with them paying to park every day?
No, I'm not disagreeing with you on that. I agree with you on that.
I think it's a double standard that we're setting that I don't agree with.
I'm done. You know, my thoughts are that if an employee is assigned other than the courthouse, and that's where they usually park, whether it be at the medical examiner, the Fabians Warehouse, wherever, then they come in here as a requirement for their job to pick up mail, then they do not spend their day here. They only do whatever business brings them and then they leave. I'm okay with that. These are the employees that are not generally assigned to this building. Is that correct?
There.
I would move to approve, item 17. Unless there's any other discussion on that one item.
If I can add to that, also, just I guess for the people at home and other county employees listening, related to this item, I understand that patients that come to see, that are employees of the county and their families that come to see, visit our clinic because they're sick, they're also afforded the opportunity of not having to pay parking for their visit.
No, sir, they do pay parking right now. We're looking into that.
Okay. I was under the understanding because I called the clinic and they do have the ability to stamp a ticket.
They only stamp it for like their labs. They do not stamp it for an employee visiting. I talked to Dr. Nyack about that on Thursday morning, I believe it was, or Friday morning. And I also talked to Sam Trujillo on Friday about looking at the possibility of addressing, with the Delta Clinic closing, addressing people who drive down to the courthouse to access the clinic, in what would it take to be able to validate their parking as well?
Okay, I'm glad we're looking at that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Judge, can I clarify? You made the motion correct to approve. Did you include accept for the discussion on the one item? Was that part of your motion?
No. I moved to the item.
Okay, so it's just a straight motion to approve?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, Judge.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout? Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Executive Session, item 18. Commissioners' Court will now recess into executive session to discuss items 18A through 18J pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.087 and 551.071. The Court will reconvene to take official action. The Court is recessing at 11:01 a.m.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.html to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor felony and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners' Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for "Al Paso County Commissioners" or "Al Paso County, Texas." Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy. In 2015, the County of Al Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all Al Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast2coastrx.com. Happy savings!
Did you know the County of Al Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the manner required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the Al Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes: be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard; and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of Al Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting. Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting. Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting. Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting. Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting. Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting. Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting. Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting. Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting. Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting. Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting. Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting. Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting. Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting. Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting. Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting. Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting. Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting. Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting. Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting. Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting. Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting. Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting. Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting. Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting. Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.htm to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor felony and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for El Paso County Commissioners or El Paso County, Texas. Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
You can now watch Commissioners Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for El Paso County Commissioners or El Paso County, Texas. Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy. In 2015, the county of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast, the number two, coastrx.com. Happy savings.
Did you know the county of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the manner required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the county of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Denny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.htm to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor felony and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for El Paso County Commissioners or El Paso County, Texas. Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy. In 2015, the County of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast, the number two, coast, r x dot com. Happy savings.
Did you know the County of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.[922.57] contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Thank you. Commissioners Court has reconvened into regular open session at 12:28 p.m. Item 19, approve and authorize the county judge to sign a 381 Economic Development Agreement with Five Stars Loyalty Incorporated, contract number 2018-0116. Could we please have a motion to postpone this regular session item and the corresponding executive session item, item 18C, to postpone for one week, please?
So moved, second?
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 20, discuss and take action on the pending claim of Catherine Maria Wharton, county attorney's file number 024817LC.
Good afternoon, Judge Commissioners Jed Unterekker, Assistant County Attorney. I am asking the court for a motion authorizing the county to accept $17,410.06 as full and final payment for Ms. Wharton's workers' compensation subrogation lien.
Should we accept?
Second?
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 21, discuss and take action on the potential litigation regarding opioid costs, county attorney's file number 024417PL.
Good afternoon, Judge Commissioners Jed Unterekker, Assistant County Attorney. I am asking the court for a rather long motion to grant an exemption from the competitive bidding process and proposal procedures in accordance with Texas Local Government Code Section 262.024A4 for retaining outside counsel in this litigation. Furthermore, in retaining outside counsel for this litigation, that the court find that there is a substantial need for the legal services which cannot adequately be performed by attorneys and supporting personnel of El Paso County or another public agency, and nor can the legal services reasonably be obtained from attorneys in private practice under a contract providing only for the payment of hourly fees without regard to the outcome of the matters because of the nature of the representation.
Are moved?
That was the judge?
That was Commissioner Stout?
Thank you.
Now, second?
Thank you. Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 22, discuss and take action on the legal rights and obligations regarding El Paso Sheriff's motor pool vehicle, county attorney's file number 005018AA.
Good afternoon, Judge Commissioners Jed Unterekker, Assistant County Attorney. I am asking for a motion authorizing the county judge to sign a salvage retention agreement in this matter.
Must approve?
Second?
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 23, approve and authorize the county auditor to make a payment of $42,249.35 to Rocky Mountain Holdings LLC doing business as Air Methods for air ambulance transport of inmate KF, county attorney's file number 000717IC. No action on this item. And the last item, could we please have a motion to postpone item 18H? That's an executive session item for one week, please?
No move.
Second?
Thank you. Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout? Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. That completes today's agenda.
Thank you very much. Returned.
The meeting is adjourned at 12:33 p.m. Thank you.